I will now call it November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you into the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. I want to welcome you in the audience, as well as those that might be watching on TV, to tonight's City Council meeting. Next, we have the consent agenda unless their items need to be pulled, except a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Saying.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Only have one speaker appearance form, and as for the public hearing, so we will move on to item number five, which is a public hearing on the annexation of portion of Cowherd Road right-of-way.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record, City Council Information Form dated October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, with the following attachments: site location maps, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, and bill approving annexation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mike, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, Mayor, Member of the City Council. This is a public hearing, which is being held at the request of the city and the applicant property owner, which is Jackson County, Missouri, to approve an annexation of property, which is the Shepherd Road right-of-way, consists approximately one point two acres. It's located at the east side, or from the east side of the intersection of northwest RD Myes Road and northwest Shepherd Road into the city limits. The subject right-of-way is located, oh, actually, sorry, this is, I'm on Cowherd Road, sorry. Let me start over here. This is a request, again, by the city and the applicant for Jackson County for the Cowherd Road right-of-way, which is for the annexation of that property, which is approximately one point nine-two acres. It's located west of the intersection of Cowherd Road and south Seven Highway into the city limits. The subject property is shown here on the map, outlined by the black and white line. It is located, again, west of Cowherd, the intersection of Seven Highway and Cowherd Road. This annexation is being done in order to help facilitate the development of the Edgewater subdivision, which is down here to the south, and as part of that subdivision, they need to make improvements to that road. In order for them to do that, that road needs to be annexed into the city. Tonight is the initial public hearing for the first reading of the annexation. The second reading is scheduled for December seventh of this year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question from the council? Is there applicant here?
We, the city and the...
We initiated it?
We have initiated this with approval of Jackson County.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Support of. Opposition two. Opposition two. Close this public hearing. We would like to, well, we're going straight to...
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay, introductions here.
First reading of bill number forty-eight nineteen, in ordinance annexing one point nine-two plus-or-minus acres of Cowherd Road right-of-way, generally located at west of the intersection of East Cowherd Road and south State Route seven to the west of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading only tonight.
Right, you knew that.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to the next public hearing, annexation of portion of Shepherd Road right-of-way.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record, City Council Information Form dated October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, with the following attachments: site location map, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, and bill approving annexation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mike?
All right, thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing being held, again, at the request of the city and the applicant, Jackson County, for consideration to approve an annexation of the Shepherd Road right-of-way, which consists of approximately one point two acres into the city limits. The property is located west, or the right-of-way is located west of the intersection of northwest RD Myes Road and northwest Shepherd Road, which is directly north and adjacent to the Sunny Point subdivision, which was before City Council earlier this year. This annexation is being done in conjunction with that Sunny Point development to help bring the land within this area into the city. There is a provision in the state statute that says if the annexation of land creates an island of unincorporated territory, that the adjacent property owners should be offered the ability to annex as part of this annexation. Annexing this portion of the right-of-way would create an island of unincorporated territory, and so the city did reach out and provide mailed notice to any unincorporated properties that abut this right-of-way, letting them know that they have the ability to voluntarily annex into the city as well. We did not receive any request or any properties that expressed interest in joining the annexation or annexing in the future. This request, again, is the first public hearing and the first reading for the annexation. The second reading is scheduled for the December seventh, two thousand and twenty, City Council meeting.
Any questions, Mike? Saying none. We'll go to the public. I have a speaker's appearance form from Doug Spiker. He's not in support or in opposition, but questions.
Hi, Mr.
So if you want to come in and be sworn in?
If you're so concerned with this one, you're about to give this case to the true subject. Please, your name is...
I'm Doug Spiker. We live at twenty-three thousand Northwest Shepherd Road. You may recognize me from the previous public hearing. I just had a couple of questions. As you recall, from the Shepherd Road discussions, the road west of Sunnyvale is going to be torn up. And so this talks about that being a right-of-way. We were wondering, that's a pretty wide right-of-way, because we had to give one across our property having to do with septic. Shouldn't that part of that road go to the landowners rather than to the city? Because that's a pretty wide area of land. Is that common for a right-of-way to be part of the city property?
The right-of-way is typically...
Because the road's no longer going to be there.
That's correct. And so depending on how the city and the county assessor work to split that right-of-way into where that land goes is up to the county assessor. Sometimes it's split in half, and some goes to the north property owners adjacent, or sometimes it goes to the south. Or it can all go back to the city, depending on where it was originally dedicated.
So how does that process work?
If this is approved and then approved upon second reading, then the city would reach out to the county assessor and figure out how they want to handle it. If you have to provide input on that, you can reach out to staff.
Well, it's not our property, but it just makes sense, since I know the width of a normal right-of-way isn't that wide. The second question I had was regarding, both Nathan and Adam have both been very responsive when I've had questions, but one question that came up that Adam was not able to answer is that if you annex this, he wasn't sure who would do the maintenance, because it's a chip-and-seal road, and not only that, but the snow maintenance, and we have dumping from time to time that we call someone. If, Adam seemed to think that it was the county that was going to take care of the road. If that's the case, then why annex it? So do you know who would be doing the maintenance on the road?
Mr. Spiker, at this point, I think what we'll have is probably a hybrid. We have a joint, compact with the county, where they maintain roads that are in our jurisdiction, and we maintain some roads that are in their jurisdiction. In this case, since this will be the only chip-and-seal road we have for the time being, we'll probably ask them to assist us in the chip seal, but as far as snow removal, we'll remove the snow, just like we always have. We'll take care of the trash and mowing and stuff like that.
So we should contact the city, then, once this is for the entire road?
Yes, just like you would now.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, you bet. Anyone, okay, so now, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Support of. Opposition two. Opposition two. Close the public hearing, and we'll have the introduction of bill number forty-eight twenty.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-eight twenty, ordinance annexing one point two zero plus-or-minus acres of Shepherd Road right-of-way, generally located at the northeast corner of northwest RD Myes Road and northwest Shepherd Road to the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading only tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing on the amended PRO concept plan for Adams Point Village.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter the record, City Council Information Form dated November ten, two thousand and twenty, with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, twenty fourteen Comprehensive Plan by reference, and bill approving the amended PRO concept plan for Adams Point Village. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mike?
Nathan.
Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor Ross.
Me.
Counsel, before you tonight is a public hearing at the request of the applicant and owner, Tyler Sully with Sully Homes, to approve an amendment to the Adams Point Village PRO, or Planned Residential Overlay Concept Plan. The Adams Point Village subdivision is located south of RD Myes Road at its intersection with northeast Adams Point Drive. The entire subdivision is approximately thirty-eight acres, but the remaining area that's unplatted is less than that. The first two phases have been built and platted, and this is delineating, as you can see, the striped area here is the area within the subdivision with lots is the platted area, and the remaining area is the unplatted area that this PRO concept plan will entail. Since those first two phases have been developed, several private property owners have constructed fences and other structures that encroach into Track D, which you can see, Track D is along this western boundary, right next to the golf course. Thus, since those encroachments, rather than asking those property owners to remove their structures, the developer is asking to reduce the open space and essentially give that open space to those adjacent owners. The developer will need to coordinate the subdivision of this tract through an administrative plat, as well as the deeding over of each tract, or the sliver, to the respective property owner. The reduction in this open space is acceptable. It only reduces the buffer width from twenty-five, as it currently is, to fifteen, which is the minimum buffer width for this location. Additionally, the subdivision as a whole has ample open space to still meet the minimum open space requirements for a single-family subdivision. The trail along the west property line in Track D was removed in two thousand and sixteen for reference. Secondly, the developer is asking to reduce the housing classification just on one lot. Previously, after error, they realized that they only intended to request Lot forty-three to be reduced from Class A to Class B. The rest, in this pink area next to the Class A, will remain Class A as originally approved. So they have provided change, change to the approved, or the plans that they provided here, and their floor area housing classification matches, in their summary table here, matches the approval, except for, or the approved plan except for Lot forty-three, which is being reduced to, from Class A to Class B, in an effort to match the rest of that block that is already platted as Class B. So forty-three will match the remainder of that block as required by code that only one housing class is imposed on any individual block. Other than those two changes, all other elements of the concept plan, as originally approved in two thousand and six, or five, sorry, and later amended in two thousand and sixteen, are intact. The required trail and exercise and equipment along the south and east borders of the site must be installed with the next phase, as well as the trail in the northwest corner of the subdivision connecting RD Myes to the internal sidewalk system. All landscaping, streetlights, building design, and other elements of the originally approved plan remain intact as well. So thus, staff does recommend approval of the proposed plan with five conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions, Nate? Saying none, is there available present?
Your Honor, I just would like to...
Councilman...
Clarification, because I saw a lot of lots crossed out, and lots changed, and then changed back. So it's just the one lot is the only one that's going to be changed in the classification, correct?
Correct. The revised plan provided by the developer...
Just wanted to make sure we're back to one lot.
Yes, brought everything back to Class A as originally approved, except for forty-three, Lot forty-three, which matches the rest of that block.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
A quick question.
Councilmember Erickson?
I'm sorry, I left my iPad at home, so I can't look it up. When I read this, I thought that the lot widths were above minimum standards. That's correct still, right?
Yes, the general layout of the subdivision has not changed.
So it's, okay.
Anyone else? Developer, present? Want to be sworn in?
If you're so concerned with this one, you're about to give this case to the true subject.
I do. Tyler Sully with Sully Homes, three-seven-three-zero, northeast Trune Drive, Lees Summit, Missouri, six-four-oh, six-four. Just to clarify on the lot classification, that was an error on our part whenever we initially submitted the plat to Nathan, so our apologies there. We intended to continue the Class A throughout the block, like what was originally planned, and then take that one Lot forty-three back to the B classification, and then everything east of that being the B classification as well. So I think we got cleared up on the plat now, and haven't notated properly. Again, that's our apologies for that initial submittal that had that, had that error. So have any answering questions that you may have?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to the public. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Support of. Opposition two. Opposition two. Close the public hearing, and we would like to introduce bill number forty-eight twenty-one.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-eight twenty-one, in ordinance approving the amended Adams Point Village Planned Residential Overlay Concept Plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
Second reading of bill number forty-eight twenty-one, in ordinance approving the amended Adams Point Village Planned Residential Overlay Concept Plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-nine sixty-four.
Last public hearing is on substantial amendments to the two thousand and nineteen, twenty CDVG Annual Action Plan.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record, City Council Information Form dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, with the following attachments: affidavit of publication in the examiner on October ten, two thousand and twenty, and resolution with substantial amendments to the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty CDVG Annual Action Plan attached as Exhibit A. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, now we're going to continue with Matt this time.
Yep, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Before you this evening is a request for substantial amendments to the two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty CDVG Annual Action Plan, which is to accommodate an additional two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars in CDVG CV funds that were received in September. This is in addition to the previously approved one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars that were approved in April. Substantial amendments include allocation of one hundred thousand dollars to the Small Business Loan Program for the opening of a second round of applications, and then the remaining one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars is proposed to be allocated to Community Services League for housing and utility assistance. The CDVG Advisory Committee held a public hearing on October twenty-seventh and recommended approval of the substantial amendments, and recommended that each small business loan be increased from a maximum of ten thousand dollars to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars. The minimum would also increase from five thousand to ten thousand per business. Any unutilized small business loan funds after March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one will be administratively reallocated to CSL. Staff does recommend approval of substantial amendments, as well as the additional recommendations made by the advisory committee, and I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions, or Matt? Saying none. Thank you, Matt. Let's go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? All right, Ms. Melody?
If you're so concerned with this one, you're about to give this case to the true subject.
I do. My name is Melody Christman, two-two-two-four, Northwest Twelfth Street, Blue Springs, Missouri. Hi, Mayor and Council, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. I just wanted to come and speak, and first of all, thank the city and the council just for entrusting Community Services League with the funding that you are continuing to do through this very difficult time for our citizens of Blue Springs. I think I sent an email to the city administrator, Eric, and Mayor Ross, telling them my smile was fake it till you make it, because I wasn't sure that our small office would be able to pull off the task that we've been charged with at this time for our citizens. But I'm so happy to say that we have been able to do so, and we will continue to do so. We've heard so many stories, and I think the reason I wanted to be here tonight is to just reemphasize, our residents are suffering. We are having so many people come to us, there are lines out the door, they're waiting to come in to receive assistance. These are our neighbors. These are your neighbors. And it is no longer an indigent population that's coming to Community Services League. So many of our residents are going through so much with being furloughed, with losing their jobs, and multiple reasons during this pandemic, the illness itself, a family member's illness, being quarantined, all the above. And CSL has taken on this task, and we are so happy to do so, and we are very diligent in our keeping of the records and getting things right the first time. So I just wanted to reiterate our job, reiterate our thankfulness, and reiterate to you our appreciation for entrusting our offices to do this.
Well, Melody, we want to thank you for what you do. I know that there are times that you get tired, but you just keep on like the energizer bunny. You just keep on doing it. A lot of it probably has to do with resilience and stick-to-unice because of the roots from Arkansas.
Arkansas, I knew you were saying that.
You knew I was going...
That's some strong fuck down there.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, please.
I would just like to commend you. These troubling times and the tremendous amount of responsibilities on your shoulders, I couldn't think of a better person to do that for CSL. You are CSL, and I just want to thank you for that, because somebody put you here for a reason, and you're doing your reason, I mean, you're doing your job, and you're doing it well, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kayler? I'll make mine simple. Ditto.
Ditto. That's my word. Ditto.
Well, I think we all appreciate what you do. You know, and we are, we're in times right now where people wouldn't even have imagined a year ago needing help.
Right.
And I just appreciate them not letting their pride get in the way of asking for help. You know, and thank God that CSL is there, and the city has entrusted you, because we believe in you and CSL in doing the work, so thank you.
Well, we appreciate it, and we'll do our best to make sure our citizens are taken care of.
All right. Thank you. Who would like, well, who would like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution one-on-six dash twenty-twenty?
So moved.
Oh, oh. Man, I'm trying to get it done, aren't I? Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Anybody like to speak in opposition, too? We'll close this public hearing, and now we'll have a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Thank you. Good, I got you all to keep me straight here. I was so excited about what Melody was doing, I was moving on.
Impressive.
Okay, next we have introduction reading of bill number forty-eight twenty-two.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-eight twenty-two, in ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring for public use certain permanent right-of-way stormwater easement and temporary construction easement in real property for public improvements associated with the establishment and construction of a new city road to be known as Northeast Twenty-seventh Street, authorizing the city administrator and his designees to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring the necessary interests in real property, authorizing the city attorney and her designees to institute condemnation proceedings if such interests in real property cannot be acquired by purchase through good-faith negotiations, and authorizing the city administrator to file a petition for voluntary annexation following acquisition of the permanent right-of-way.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first long reading and assign...
Is there...
Proceed with the second.
Somebody said second already?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign.
No.
Okay, we have one note?
Two.
Two notes, okay. Motion carries with two notes.
Five to two with councilmembers, Edmondson and Levise voting no. Thank you. All right. Gave me a chance to catch my breath. A second reading of bill number forty-eight twenty-two, in ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of requiring for public use certain public permanent right-of-way stormwater easement and temporary construction easement in real property for public improvements associated with the establishment and construction of a new city road to be known as Northeast Twenty-seventh Street, authorizing the city administrator and his designees to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring the necessary interests in real property, authorizing the city attorney and her designees to institute condemnation proceedings if such interests in real property cannot be acquired by purchase through good-faith negotiations, and authorizing the city administrator to file a petition for voluntary annexation following acquisition of the permanent right-of-way.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that the word negotiate and the two words, good faith, kind of stand out to me, therefore I will be voting for this.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with the development that this road is going to lead to. I think that's a great thing that's going to come to our community. I do have a problem with condemnation, taking of land forcefully from somebody, so, and that's why I'm voting against it.
Okay. All right, if there's any further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
No.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with a vote of five to two, given ordinance number forty-nine sixty-five.
Okay, that brings us to Merrill announcements, and we want everybody to have a good, happy Thanksgiving. Due to the COVID pandemic right now, we want to make sure that everybody practice those suggestions to be safe with family, you know, socializing, keep your mask on, and try to distance yourself as much as possible, and I know if you've got family, you want to hug and kiss them, but wait and do that next year, two thousand and twenty-one. Hopefully, we'll have the vaccines and all that in place, and we can get back to some semblance of normal. And also, did you need to make a comment, too?
Yes, actually, I would like to make a comment, and it has nothing to do with
Be responsible citizens and good citizens that keep Blue Springs a nice place to live. The other thing I was going to say, and I kick it off, and then I'm going to turn it over to Eric, because we're starting to spike, not only in the nation, but in, in this area in Missouri, Jackson County, and, and the reason that they put in some more restrictions in all the metropolitan counties in the area, and I wish they would all kind of be consistent, but they're not. I think Wyandotte in Jackson County came out being consistent today, Johnson County seems to be a little bit more lenient than some of them, Kansas City is probably a little stricter than some of them, and we don't know what Clay and Platt and Cash is going to do, because I haven't seen theirs yet. But anyway, to keep everybody safe, we don't have a lot of people in here tonight, but occasionally, we don't know. Staff is exploring the possibility, and, and I know we hate virtual meetings, I mean, I'm on them all the time, but we want to keep everybody safe, both council members and staff. So, staff is looking into maybe going virtual with council meetings for a while, or some type of hybrid, council meeting and planning commission meeting. So, Eric, do you want to join in and kind of explain it?
Yes, sir, you, I think you just summed it up. We are, this, this will probably potentially be the last in-person meeting we have for a while, and we, we will probably go virtual. There is a scenario where if, out of the seven elected officials, if there are two or three who elect to do it virtually, then we could probably have a small, small group that meets in person. We're going to evaluate that, and we're going to be talking to each one of you about your comfort level, about meeting in person. Everybody has a different opinion about that. We want to continue the business of our community, and I think over the last seven to eight months, staff's done an amazing job. You've done a really good job of continuing the work of the city, but there were, there were, and there will be more, I think, recommendations or restrictions coming out of Jackson County that I would anticipate will be rolling things back, and so we're, we are anticipating that. Christine Cates, Chris Andy, and our IT director, Dan Hood, have done a phenomenal job, along with everybody else, to keep things working, and we will keep you, keep you posted. Think the next planning commission meeting has been canceled, and so the next city council meeting would be the December seventh, and the mayor and I have not yet confirmed this, but there is a potential of a work session on November thirtieth, which is the fifth Monday of November. So, we'll, we will discuss that agenda and figure out what that plan looks like, but I would imagine, at least for the foreseeable future, we will probably be going virtual and/or hybrid.
My only request is that I get a new, another tutorial on how to do that stuff. Virtual.
We can do that.
Yeah.
I, I, I thought I received a notice today that November thirty was canceled.
I did too.
I did too.
Well, that went out, that went out, but Eric and I were discussing it when it went out, so.
So, it may be uncanceled.
Yeah, it's not canceled yet.
I don't, I don't know that I should say this, but if it's possible for the vaccine with Moderna and Pfizer and whomever comes, I certainly don't want any favors in the community, but it'd be cool to see the councils, councils step up and try to make that happen. I want to be number one in line, but I'd rather other people get it first, but I, I just, I'm real excited about that through the darkness, I see that coming, and I'm excited about it. I don't know where I can go to, so I can come home and say, hey, I did it first.
But, you know, I think they're saying, they're kind of, the CDC instructions are, healthcare providers certainly be number one. Elderly.
Ditto. I knew you were going to get there.
Suck in that yarn.
Yeah, you know, I'm not quite elderly yet, but I want to say it works on you first.
I just hear so many people not excited about it. It's, you know, I don't want to get the vaccine, I don't want to do this, I, it, and I, I just, it makes me nuts, therefore, I want to be very positive about it, and I want to be the first one of the group that can get it. I don't want to take it before anybody else, but I don't want to be the first one if I can.
Okay, well, that reminds me too, one of the things I forgot to mention before we meet again, December first is the tree lighting ceremony. Now, it, it won't be with the kids there singing like we've done in the past, it's going to be a virtual with, with the fear of us in attendance. So, council, you, you're there, I'm there, and Santa will be there when we flip the switch.
Your Honor, I also, I'm sure that you're aware of it, Downtown Alive has worked really hard this year and managed to gather enough funds to light the buildings downtown, so that will be the same night that we light the outline of the buildings downtown Blue Springs, so we're real excited about that.
Nice to see that come back.
Yeah, you know, because when I read it, and, and I'm sure it'll be well coordinated, it's when I flip the switch, it's going to light up all downtown, so there's somebody going to be at another switch somewhere.
Yeah, there's a couple of switches.
Well, but it's exciting to have the whole downtown, and the gateway.
Yes.
Will be lit.
Cool.
Yes, so it's going to be exciting times, and, you know, I don't want to be so boisterous to say that the Plazas got nothing on us. City Attorney, do you have a motion for someone to so move?
Yes, Your Honor, a motion is in order that this public body go into closed session pursuant to section six, ten, point oh two one, sub-paragraph two, revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of privileged communications between a governmental body or its representative and legal counsel, including the purchase or sale of real estate, and that any minutes, documents, and other records discussed or taken during the closed session remain closed, and that the regular open session of this body stand adjourned at the completion of the executive session.
Well, before you so move, I forgot thoughts to ponder. Let me get that in here. Tonight comes from Matty Stepanek, and it says, unity is strength. When there is teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved. End quote. So move somebody.
So move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Letticee?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, we're going to be excused of the council executive conference.